Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the school board's business meeting for Monday, May 21st, 2018, to order. I think I said order twice. Sarah, would you please state your role?
Bowerman.
Not back.
Alan. Here. McIan.
Here.
Pos.
Here.
Tucker, here. And Swan.
Good evening. Let's move on to number two, item two, which is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to item number three, and that is good news items. We are shocked at these schools. Is there Kelly Holstein in the house? Would you mind coming up to the board table, please, Kelly?
I do not mind.
While Kelly is making her way down the aisle. Teacher of the year, Kelly Holstein. We would like to honor and congratulate Takata Learning Center's English teacher, Kelly Holstein, for being named Teacher of the Year for the state of Minnesota. Kelly is the 54th recipient of the prestigious award and the first from our district. Kelly started Takata since its inception in 2012. Please join me in congratulating and honoring Kelly as Minnesota's 2018 Teacher of the Year. We'll stop right there. I have to tell you, so I've had the good fortune of witnessing multiple Takata graduations over the years since 2012. And the very first one I attended was a really special event because it never in my life had I actually seen individual students be cared for by a teacher publicly in front of their peers, as well as their parents and staff. And it was very evident from that very first graduation that I saw when you were there and you stood up for the very first student, I don't even know who it is, you probably know. From that point forward, you make a connection that was so evident when you attend those graduations that you have made an impression on these kids' lives. You put your fingerprints all over them. I have no doubt the students that you spoke to and about and the ones that even that you didn't speak about, there is no way that you are not going to have a lasting impact on these kids' lives, literally, for the rest of their life. I got to watch it from the sidelines. I wasn't even in the class. I don't know what you do, but you could feel it, I mean, just think about it. You could feel it in the room, the care and concern that you had for them. So I just want you to know that way back then when we started this thing, it was very evident that that teacher right there, we don't have a lot of special teachers, but you had something that was just crazy, ridiculous, awesome. And I cannot thank you enough for what you're doing for those kids because, again, you have left a lasting impression on their lives. I have no doubt.
Thank you, Scott.
I'd like to comment too before Kelly does. Kelly and I have actually become really good friends this year, which is, I can't say about every single teacher in the district, obviously, because we have so many, but we, you know, I've certainly befriended every teacher in the district. But Kelly and I connected from the moment we met each other. And she invited me to be part of her crew, her posse, at the admin celebration of all the nominees for Minnesota Teacher of the Year. And I don't know that I've ever been happier for another educator than I was at that moment. It was like the Academy Awards. And our table was just thrilled. And it's been an absolute pleasure to become friends with Kelly this year. We share a passion about kids and serving every single kid that comes through our doors, and no matter what. And the fact that she does that, she is going to be an incredible representative for the state of Minnesota, our school district, the city of Shakopee. And so I'm just thrilled. It was a very bright moment for my education career to be a little tiny part of what Kelly has accomplished already. And so I do want to prep the board that we'll need to make some accommodations for Kelly because she's going to be very sought-after speaker next year and very commonplace in the school districts. Support the Teacher of the Year in all their endeavors in the year that they're serving. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you. Yeah, I just thank you for having me here. And it's, I think, it's like the hometown, right? And I'm so grateful for this district for creating Takata, for seeing that need and making an ALC for our district and continuing to understand its value and support the school and giving unfaltering support toward our students who need a little more compassion, a little more patience, a little more understanding. A lot of you guys have come to our graduation, are involved in Takata. Like, I know your faces. Like, it's really a big deal that the kids know your faces. Like, you are actively involved in our school and that means a lot to our staff and our students and hopefully to the community. I am very grateful to the district for always moving forward, no matter what happens in the past, to Takata for helping me grow, to Eric Service, our principal, for coaching me with an open mind and a clear heart, to the Takata staff for knowing what it takes a village to raise an ALC student sometimes, and to Gary for bringing his passion, his compassion, his leadership and his support to our district. We needed you. And I'm excited to see where your vision takes us next. And at a personal level, it's been so much fun getting to be your friend. This guy right here, like, no matter what he's going through, he's so supportive of our school, but also our writer's workshop, which is a group of students who are kind of working through some stuff and figuring it out. And we're doing it through writing. And we have an online literary magazine that we publish every two weeks. And Gary actually came to our celebration of our 25th issue. And he sat in the class for the whole hour and listened to people's writing, gave feedback. And even when you have chemo and things going on, like, you write comments almost every single time on every kid's piece in our online literary magazine because you can leave comments. And you take the time to do that, and it means so much to them.
Chemo's a good time for me to do that.
But no matter what's going on in your life, like, you prioritize kids in this district. And it's so clear that you do that. And I've seen it personally, and I've seen it professionally. And it's a huge gift to our district that you're here. And I want to thank you for that. And I am excited. I get to learn from other teachers that are passionate in the nation. And I get to change the narrative of ALCs. I get to let people know the wonderful things that Shakopee is doing because I think people don't always know that. And just help other teachers learn and see and appreciate that every kid matters. And owning your own stuff makes a huge difference for our kids. And I think they deserve that. They deserve for us to be our best selves. So if I can even get a few teachers to think of stuff that way, then it's worth it. I will represent the 86,000 teachers from the state at Nationals and just do whatever I can to make sure that people are heard. So thank you for having me here. It means a lot to me. Sincerely.
Congratulate you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, before we move on, Sarah, I noticed that we jumped right from three to four to consent, but we did not approve the agenda as presented. We've got a couple of numbering items as well under consent items.
Oh, goodness.
So if we can entertain adding a number four, which is just approving the agendas presented, and then changes, and then slide everything else down accordingly.
Yep.
And I will do my best to try to follow along.
Thank you.
Okay. That said, we do have one addition in our agenda. We're going to add, which I think at this point would be 6.6, it would be 7.6, which is going to fall under old business action items. And that is a resolution authorizing the execution of legal documents related to the TIES dislocation.
Thank you.
And the other changes or additions? Now, do you want to take a motion to approve the agenda as modified? Right? Second. Tony, any discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post name, sign. Motion carries. Can we move on to item five then? That'll be our consent items. Do you take a motion to approve consent?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a couple people. You're always risking, or I'm taking risks and singling a few people out. So I'm just going to limit it to one. But I saw that we're losing our director of grounds, building grounds manager, Kane. And those of us who've been on BAC or on BAC have been working with Kane for a long time closely. And he's done a terrific job. He will be a great loss to the district. He's just been a real steadying influence. And I know I've had questions about Kane, and he gets right back to it. So I'm disappointed to see Kane go, but I understand it's a good opportunity to live with him. So I'm happy for him that way. But I did want to recognize Kane and his contributions. And frankly, there's many other names on here that I recognize. And I'm sorry to see some of the people are choosing to move on, but I'm going to assume that it's good things for them and wish them well. But I did at least want to recognize Kane.
Any other discussion on consent? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post name, sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to item six, which will be old business discussion, ladies. And Gary, you want to pick it up with school district goals?
I do. So when I came in as superintendent last late summer, early fall, one of the things I needed to do as a superintendent is take a look at what were some of the goals that the school board had set? What were things that they wanted to accomplish for the school year? So I, there was a document created, I believe you said, back in June of '17 that indicated, you know, what were some improvements that the board wanted to work on for the school year. So I just want to really briefly go down each of the improvements that the board mentioned and let you know where they're at and how they've done. The first item was have a more visible school board agenda process. And I feel like that has been accomplished. All agenda documents are posted either prior to or during every meeting that's occurred. And so that was a pretty easy one to knock down. The next one was communication path between the cabinet and the school board. I feel like the communication between our cabinet members, our board and myself is something that we worked on right away and that, again, we've accomplished. And if things come up, we talk about them right away and get working on them. Creating a culture of trust, honesty and integrity. District-wide, I feel like the culture has increased, very much so this year. Currently doing an evaluation of yours truly to, and one of the key parts of that is how is the district culture? So we'll have more information on that in my evaluation, but I feel like we've done a good job of addressing that. Budget creation and checks and balances. Clearly, we've implemented budget checks and balances this year. Jeff will be presenting our budget next month to be voted upon for next year. And we feel like we've done what was said to do. Creating a five-year budget was the next one. Really, for '17, '18, the budget has been balanced. We think we're going to come out ahead. And we're presenting a balanced budget after the adjustment process, obviously, for next year. Development of a P-card process of procedures. Clearly, that was a big focus back late fall. And P-card procedures have all been cleaned up. And again, mine sits in my drawer locked up and unused so far this year. The next two items are addressing audit issues. All auditing issues that we can address have been addressed appropriately. And so that's a pretty easy response to that. Communications committee was another suggested improvement. And the communications committee has been implemented. They're active and engaged. I sat in on the last communications committee meeting. They actually does a really nice job running that. District strategic directions. The cabinet's been evaluating initiatives to assess our effectiveness. And we really have a plan to reboot our strategic plan this summer so that we can take a look at what portions of our strategic plan still hold up, where are spots where we simply have too much verbiage and people aren't really tuned in to the strategic plan, and how can we modify it, simplify it, so we can make it an active plan for our district? And like I shared with a couple of you, Dave and I worked on that a little bit today already. We're so excited about it. I'm sure that financial presentation is aligned with school board business meetings and that financial presentation is above and clear to the public and also to see back just a couple more revisit governance. What did governance look like and how good should it be implemented? Feel like the board has done a nice job of directing the superintendent's office and expectations of running the district and responding to the public. And the next one is similar to that, internal customer service. Not same-day service. Every single email, call, you name it, has been responded to within usually that day, if not easily within 24 hours. So we feel like even if we're not giving community members the answer they want, we're being honest and transparent with them. School board liaisons. Again, the evaluation for the superintendent is, should glean this out and let us know, you know, what are the best ways to communicate that. And then lastly, learning sessions. They've been implemented and open to the public. And so I would say that the school board should be very proud of their accomplishments this year. And I don't know if any of you want to chime in. There is one other document that we added to the board packet and to the public. And that was, again, the budget adjustment working timeline. We put that out there. And thanks, Sarah, Crystal. It's a pretty small font there, but we stuck to the schedule. And I'm really proud of that. We established marker points, I guess you'd call them, that we wanted to hit as we went through that process. And again, want to thank the public for all their comments and feedback throughout this process. I'm very proud of how it went. So board members, anybody want to chime in on any of the specifics of how you guys did this year? Or anything to do with that document they had sent from last year?
Remember when we put this list together?
Oh, yeah. Very, very well.
It was June. And I guess I would categorize these a lot of process improvements, if you recall. We did this considering what we were dealing with at the time. It was, okay, what things can we do to address either deficiencies or just make improvements to how we're operating? And it generated this list, but it also had other Bs and Cs that were secondary, so they're not addressed here. But I think this is the document you asked us all to provide you comments back. And it just reflects kind of our assessment. So it's kind of our assessment on how we've done. And I know I'm personally quite pleased, especially on the financial side, relative to the process, the P-card, CFAC, the budget timeline, the transparency, the publication setting, et cetera. So, yeah, I'm very pleased procedurally and process-wise on some of the improvements.
And just one comment on the evaluation. The personnel committee met two weeks ago, three weeks ago, to talk about Gary's evaluation, what format we wanted to use. And I think to Gary's credit, he suggested that it go to all staff, not just to direct reports and the board. So that is in flight right now. I think you hit the goal on that on Friday, right?
Right.
By Monday morning, we were 240 responsive already?
279.
279. So it's good to hear we're getting feedback.
Hopefully good.
And more to come on that in future meetings. But looking forward to hearing and seeing all the great things we're doing and areas where we can all improve.
I guess I look at it and I'm remembering, you know, the state of the state, as it were, when we made this list. And there was a lot of, there were a lot of big rocks that needed to be moved around here. A lot of heavy lifting that had to be done. A lot of improvements that needed to be done. And you could argue that anything that was on the list, when you consider it an A, the fact of the matter is, it's not possible to conquer everything.
Well, A was the longest, if you recall.
A was the longest, yes, yes. We did push some other things down. But sometimes I don't think we do a good enough job stopping smelling roses a little bit, say, even though things were in, not in the kind of shape we would have liked to have seen them when we made this list. The fact of the matter is, we have done a lot to repair the situation here. And I am very proud of the work that administrative staff has done, cabinet, the partnership that we've had with each other, but also folks throughout the district. So there's a lot of names. We might get some credit for this being a project. The fact of the matter is, behind any one of these line items, there's an awful lot of people, they've done an awful lot of work. And we'll just make sure we call that out because none of this would be possible just without us. Yeah, there's a lot of good things on here. Other comments?
Good question. And I don't know if Jeff can answer this, given his name is your name. The two audit discrepancies we've had for a number of years, preparation of financial documents and segregation of duties, we know why we had them. They were acceptable discrepancies. For Suzanne left, I knew we were going to take care of the preparation of financial documents, but if I haven't been too correct, I think segregation of duties we were concerned about maybe not being able to address. Do we think we're going to be able to address that?
I would say that we probably will see a similar finding at the end of this year. And I would say that most districts this size probably get that finding. You want to hire four people in the business office, we might like to hear that. So, you know, but the other thing we do is look at our processes and procedures so we make sure as best we can we're segregating some of our duties. But when you've got a staff of myself and Tyler and one AP person, it's kind of hard to do that. So.
Well, that's why when I read addressing appropriately, the appropriate answer is we may just live with this one. Yes. Short of hiring additional people, which is why we haven't done this historically. But we captured it because we recognize that it's an ongoing deficiency, if you will. It's just one that I don't think we're going to say we're going to eliminate. I don't think. It doesn't sound like we may be.
Right.
The other one, I think we are.
And probably not something I would keep on the list because there's nothing we can do about it.
And I think it's, and a finding that is pretty common in my school district.
Well, and a finding that's common, which is fine. But the fact of the matter is, if there's a way to get rid of it and actually set ourselves up appropriately so we don't have to keep making the explanation, I would at least like us to explore it because I'd like to not talk about it as a finding at all, if it's possible.
Yeah.
So because it's acceptable doesn't necessarily mean we should accept it.
That might be a budget implication.
Yeah, I get that.
Budget progression to it. That's the only one.
I too remember the state of the state when we made this list and all the improvements that we identified at that time that needed to happen in order to make our district function better. And I too am proud of what we've accomplished in the last 12 months. However, the very, the second to last one, where it says school board and school liaisons, I wasn't, to me, that doesn't have anything to do with the superintendent evaluation. That was, we discussed having each of us possibly be a liaison to a school in the district. And I just wanted to clarify that that's not, that's right in this year.
There may be a little bit of confusion.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, this one, to me, has not been, this is, to me, the only one that hasn't been addressed appropriately by our department. And whether that means we just continue talking about it and implementing or deciding a different or better process.
Other comments? This is not an action item. This is just simply a discussion item. So we will continue. As you can see, there's additional problems for future updating. We'll continue updating. All right, let's move on to the 6.2. We're going to call it e-learning days update.
Yep. I just wanted to update the board that we're, we are actually having our meeting, the first meeting with the committee on e-learning days this Wednesday. And I've just provided you the program plan for e-learning days from, and so we're getting to work on it. But that's about it for an update. Other than because of the number of hours we have, particularly with our seniors next year, we very likely need to implement something as far as e-learning days.
Gary, do you want to give a quick explanation on what exactly it is for the general public if they're not paying attention or don't know anything about it?
Yep. The legislature in last session, not this current one, approved that schools can have up to five e-learning days, they call them, where kids are learning from home. Ordinarily, they'll occur in lieu of snow days. And teachers will be in contact with students using technology or other means from, the teachers will have their technology and the kids will have their technology at home. So learning for that day will occur at.
Have we, Crystal, you know, have we posted this? Because I found this document extremely helpful and extremely explanatory. It says.
It's a good document.
Yeah. I'm wondering if anyone has any questions to your point, Tony. It seems like we could post this and make an easy post. Is it already posted?
It's probably posted on your board ten, and I'm going to have it in board for you.
There you go. Perfect. And that would be it. Because this document actually was very helpful and very insightful. And now that I read some of that detail, even though we've talked about it before, it's like, gee, this made sense. Why wouldn't we do this? I'm sure most districts are going to do this.
Yeah. And it's not a complicated process when you read what was put together.
And considering what we've done as far as technology in this district, why wouldn't we take advantage of an opportunity like this, especially when we need to, from an hour's perspective? So to me, this is a no-brainer. And the document I found very helpful. So compliments to Mr. Jeff Clayman from where he's from. Very well done. It'd be a.
Okay. Anything else on the list? Otherwise, we'll move on to item seven, old business action items. 7.1 is the approval of the 2019-20 school calendar.
And again, we've looked this calendar over and reviewed it. And it's been open for comment for the board. So my recommendation is for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve calendar for 1920.
Second.
An action has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the calendar?
I have a question, and it's going to make me the least popular in the room. But particularly because I have a senior next year, and if he hears me say this, he's going to feel a little upset with me. But the last day of school next year, again, is on Thursday, which, to me, maybe would imply that we would have the same type of schedule that we're having this year with our seniors. Is it possible to talk about letting the seniors out at the year two in advance, but not necessarily?
Everything's open. And again, we just, with calendar building, we went with, you know, we're balancing, we've got to have a certain number of hours for our kids. And tradition, you know, what happens that last week of school, of course, is a factor in building it.
And I understand that. But, you know, I was just, when I think about how, you know, the days next year and.
I just question whether those, adding two days that last week, given we all know what the last week of school is like, especially for seniors, are they going to be valuable days? If it was two days that you could somehow buy earlier in the year, I just, I find it hard to think that they're going to gain a lot of value out of that Monday and Tuesday of that week. We also, tradition's always been they do graduation commercial, usually on the Wednesday, I think. Where they buy everybody all over. And so, I mean, that's already in the week planned. I get your point, especially from an hour perspective. It's just so tight. That's why you're saying.
Other than I'll type here next year.
Yeah, sure.
I was okay. I'm not okay without typing the word until the e-learning process came up, which made me feel better that we're not going to be hurting ourselves at the end. So I'm okay with it.
We'll save it for yourself.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Sarah. All right. Any other discussion? Items on the calendar.
They came to those five persons.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post name, sign. Motion carries. All right. Then we're going to go on to 7.2. Jeff, you want to come up and talk about district enrollment study?
We're going to be asking the board to approve an enrollment study. We've got a proposal from school finances. And I've listed, I think, down there, you see the deliverables. I think what's really important there is item C, interview municipal planning. I think what's really important there is item C, interview municipal planning staff to get a perspective on drill, residential building for mid data that can really help us with the, with enrollment projections. So doing a study like this is important for, as I just mentioned, enrollment projections, staff planning and facility usage. Understand, we probably haven't done a study like this in at least five years.
Five years.
Was it five?
Revisited, it was longer than that.
Oh, that's true.
We only revisited it, it was.
It's own action.
2010 was the last full robust study, I think Hazel came back up to speak and kind of did a refresher, but. Yes, I think we're definitely due for this. And I believe from your email, from the email that Gary just sent me about why, why are you doing this? A new vendor, we've used Hazel for several years and done great work, but it looks like there's significant cost savings to go in this regard.
Yep, we got a really good bid. We've got good recommendations for.
I worked with Hazel as well, so we'll be happy with the product.
The Reg Jeter gave a statement earlier, our question may be the product will be similar to what we would expect in the receiving.
Jeff, on C, you highlighted it, that is going to be very important specifically in shock because we know the growth is happening. But I'm going to, I'm going to ask what I think is an obvious question. People recognize that our school district boundaries don't just match shock the proper. So consequently, they're going to need to potentially be talking to Savage and Pride Lake for those areas should something be happened. They recognize there's.
They'll know.
As well as three towns.
On top of that, yes. Our school boundaries.
So again, they expect to be done by the middle of July and you see the cost, $9,000. Information I think we really need, especially we haven't done this since 2011.
Okay, like to entertain a motion to approve the study with school finances as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah?
Second.
So Reg, any additional discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post them sign. All right, A, you want to come up? Let's talk about some change orders. A from I C S is going to talk about change order one and change order three, self-site development, we'll start with the first one.
Yeah, the first one is self-site development. So if you remember a while back when we were trying to give grading permits and approvals, we had the D N R submit that larger pond was considered a dam in order to expedite the review process because that would have taken 90 days. We wanted to get the groundbreaking incurred, so we did design our two individual ponds and we also gained a field. So this is the work to do, the infrastructure for that, for the grading and the storm sewer and the irrigation.
So just to clarify, this is, these are funds and costs that the district has been well aware of as far as BAC is concerned?
It's been our.
It's a hard factor in the background for a long time. This is just not actually taking any action.
Yep, they worked strong.
Okay. Any questions for A regarding the self-site? Not.
Well, just kind of overall, can, we haven't talked about this publicly, I think, for a long time. We have an overview, kind of when do we feel that those fields will be playable and complete and ready? I get that question, it's like pretty much every game.
Yeah, I think the last we talked about was the fall of 2019.
Fall 2019.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's fall of 19.
We have to see it with, right, we do all the final seating this, this summer. Until the end of following summer.
Sorry about that, fall of 19.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve change order number one for the self-site development as presented.
I'll make it. For a second.
Good, okay. Tony, any additional discussion? Any others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post them sign, motion carries. Let's go on to number three, the low voltage.
Yep, so this is a separate package from the high schools and this is just strictly for low voltage work. So when we bid it out, we didn't have any access points in the academy or the athletic academy. So we have the fieldhouse, the weight area and the competition gym. So we didn't have any access points in those spaces. So this is just to add access points into those areas. So it's a corridor and then part of the change orders also. We were ahead of the schedule in some of the administration spaces, so we ended up doing some of the phase two work into phase one to get flexible spaces for us to occupy.
Okay, questions for A? Now, only one comment and that is under the signature lines, we still have Suzanne Johnson's name listed as type. I assume you'll strike that and put Jeff in there at the time when you.
Yeah, these calls.
All right. entertain a motion to approve change order number three as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Whoa.
I'll second.
Sean, seconded by Angela, ready for the discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Post them sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See you at BAC tomorrow, Monday, Wednesday. Okay, move on to item 7.5, District B schedule. Jeff come up for this or are you?
Well, I don't think it'd take very long. So this is, Gary, feel free to chime in. Gary and I have been engaged in some discussions with one association. I don't know why I would leave a nameless, but I just will for the sake of discussion. There was probably, there was probably opportunity for a little more communication about this as it was being prepared and as it was being shared. And some of that frankly was not just us, it may have been the city because the city is the conduit for some of the implementation of this. But we learned that there was an organization or an association that comparatively speaking had a tournament that they've run for several years and they've always paid for custodial. They would expect to pay for custodial. But with the policy charging for some facility use, which is by the way consistent with the vast majority of the other districts out there. This is something we've not done and frankly should have been doing. But especially with the advent of the fieldhouse, it's the right thing to do. So the policy is the right thing to do, but it, it ended up creating quite an increase for a sample tournament to the tune of going from 3,000 in custodial to about 11,000 in change, so triple or the triple the price. And that was a little concerning, rightfully so. And so in speaking with this individual, we kind of sourced why this is happening and explained the policy and the changes and that, you know, for example, the district pays for ICE. We've always paid for ICE, that's a city facility that pays for ICE. So this is a situation where we need to make sure that we're not just providing facilities gratis all the time. We're not talking about practices, we're not talking about is when tournaments happen and fees are being incurred, that's all we're talking about. So my proposal is, and what I would recommend, if you look on your board book or if you look at the document, the change that I'm suggesting, and we can discuss this further if we need to, but is under category two, where you have city of shock, these sponsored groups or activities. In that second paragraph, when they're using a facility for an activity that requires admission fee, collection of money, et cetera, may be subject to, it says 50%. I would suggest we probably need to ease it a little bit slower and I would suggest cutting that to half to 25%. So that would take, for example, this particular fee that I was talking about, down to around the $5,000 range. So their concern was not, we understand we need to pay a fee, it was just the sheer change, kind of go from zero to 60 overnight. So I think that's fair. We do need to fight fees, it's the right thing to do again, but I think that 50% might be a bit excessive initially for some of these associations who use these events and have to just pass that cost along.
So I agree, my question is when would we jump to 20, from 25 to 50? Year?
Don't know the answer to that.
This is actually implemented on, will be implemented on July 1st. And so, and one thing I do remember, I was just coming back from treatment when, when this was put out at the board meeting. And there was a discussion of the likelihood of the numbers having to change. And not just once, but multiple times as we work through this and see what some of the actual costs are. And the last thing we want to do is alienate or hurt our relationship with any of our local associations. We want to be good stewards of that relationship and partners with them.
I'll make one other comment too, that this was written specifically the way it was, both the first paragraph and the second paragraph we talked about. They have fees way, may be subjective, they obviously, it doesn't have to be. I think we're better off treating everyone the same. So rather than saying, well, this one group came to us, they showed us how this is going to change for them and then we make an exception for them. Well, then you're going to have the next group. So let's, I don't suggest we go down that path. And making a change to 25% versus the 50% seems both reasonable, collection of a fee, but a reasonable fee in this particular case. And I think that's going to be the same for other situations as well.
Yeah, I'd also like to take a crack at some of the language on this front page. And for instance, we had two situations whereupon staff members have come forward with a desire for usage. But it's arguable if the group they're bringing forward is actually a shock of the group. And so I think that's another issue within our language we're going to have to address that is not addressed within the current language we have.
How would you address that? We could kind of call up the association that we have partnerships with or.
I don't know.
Yeah, I agree that it needs to be clarified, I'm just kind of curious how would we do that?
Yeah, I'd like to look at some other similar policies that are out there to see if they do address that at all.
Not to throw a big wrench in the whole thing, but going from 50 to 25% across the board seems.
For category two.
For category two. Which I would argue is our, probably our biggest customer, category two network, I'm on.
I don't think I have a good grasp on that, but it's, it's, there's going to be several users in that group. Basketball, volleyball.
Right.
Other sports.
Right.
That are run through the city.
Right. Lacrosse.
Yeah. But some of those don't use the same kind of facilities though. See, that's just, yeah, these are the facilities like the fieldhouse.
I understand that, but that's also the, on here is also the turf of the high school.
Yeah, turf.
So my question is, it seems like a part of this was to help us financially in a situation where we were being fair for using our facilities. I understand we're going from zero to 25%, so that's just better than where we were, but it, was it possible that $400 per hour for the facility, for the fieldhouse itself, that number was possibly inaccurate? And maybe, what I'm saying is rather than cut everything in half, maybe we look at some of our actual facilities and say, you know what? You're right, this one seems a little awkward, are all the costs for the facilities, do we go with their intent?
I think those were pretty well vetted with their competitive districts. I think that was, staff did a lot of work on that. I think the concerns that I had come my way has been more the speed of implementation, where associations set the annual budgets and their fees and this is being implemented midway through. And so they didn't, when they set the fees, they didn't budget for having to pay for turf, for having, you know. And so maybe it's something that we extend out further, you know. Maybe we cut it in half and implement it later or something. So, but we all, we all, our partners, clarity as to what the fee will be and when it will be in court of error applied, right? But that's been the concerns that's come across my desk. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. The group in question here will be publishing their fees soon, so that's why it's timely now for them. There may be others who are falling too late, if you will.
Yeah.
I haven't particularly heard that. It was more about going from zero to 60 overnight, so to speak. There's probably no magic answer. This was something that you recall that John, and remember too, we've been talking about doing this for a few years. This is not a new conversation. John did a nice job, kind of leading John in the group, did a nice job leading this initiative. My understanding was this was vetted and discussed with a lot of groups. Again, I'm learning that perhaps some of the individual groups weren't directly contacted and there may have been some better communication that could have happened, so it wouldn't have been as much of a surprise. But be that as it may, the kind of group you're talking about just seems sizable. So I propose that, certainly I have opened other ideas and yours was a good one, but my understanding is the same as Matt. It's not the individual fees, if anything, quite competitive. And the fieldhouse is an example, is my understanding.
And for what it's worth, we have locked in the dates with the group that have brought this to our attention. So they're there for them if they choose to use us, which we hope happens.
And I think to your point, Matt, in terms of what does this change again? That's probably something we need to look at based upon how does this year go. We've already had some feedback, we're already adjusting, which is good, we have flexibility to do that. And then we look and see, is this right? Do we continue to be up down where we did?
Yeah, ideally we'd be communicating a year in advance, right?
That's what we'll get better at, definitely have.
Yeah, and it's tough. We want that fine line where we're attracting as many activities and things as we possibly can with, without overpricing and losing business per se. We want our facilities to be used and by everybody and as often as we can.
I, this last weekend was the shock we caught, the shock return. And I was at my stepdaughter's meeting at Long Field, eight o'clock or 9:30 on Sunday morning and I went over to the high school and saw my daughter. Great to see turf and turf being used, that's what it's supposed to be for. So I fully want to embrace that we're partnering with our partner associations. So Reg, in that same section, the religious organizations are subject to a 75% rental rate. Out of, you know, professional courtesy, has anybody checked with them by any chance to see what that looks like?
Not aware of, I'm responding to the inquiry, the dialogue that I've been part of. And so I'm only suggesting we change to 50%.
I would want to make sure we don't have to keep coming back here and.
Agreed. Agreed, we can certainly drive staff to go back to say, you know, get a little bit more feedback. But I think, careful what you ask for. Gee, 75% aren't like one thought, which you're likely to be, so it's probably what you're going to hear.
Well, and I just, you know, with all due respect, they look at, you know, certain organizations that are, that are going to be coming home with, with large sums of revenue as a result of that, whereas they, I don't know that a religious organization is leaving here with bags of dough after their service. So I would want to make sure that we are no more, you know, oppressive to them than we are anywhere else. I don't begrudge anybody to, you know, make some bucks off their event, but we need to make sure that we're not disproportionate.
What if we were considering bringing, if we're going to bring 50 to 25, 75 to 50?
You could adjust it if, that would be, I'd keep the ratio as the same, if you will.
Is that something where this is new business, right? We're not acting on this tonight?
I propose that we do so because again, from a timing perspective, organizations do need some.
I just would like to have our finance office be able to cost this out, right? So we know what we.
Well, none of this is, none of this is built into the budget.
Right. Maybe a forecast or a guess at what this production would look like.
It's all going to be incremental funds, yes, all new money, if you will. Because we've, we have not collected anything for facilities this year. It's not expected, right?
Correct.
I know for this organization, yeah. We can certainly come back to it.
I'm comfortable with going down to 25%. I just don't want every complaint to come and then we drop the board.
No, no. That's what I'm suggesting, rather than do the exception and, and use the flexibility of language now and just say, okay, well, that's a criteria. It's we need to make this and the policy, the right policy, that's why I told you to adjust. You're not going to convince me that this isn't the right thing to do, it's just what's the right factor.
I'm comfortable with 25% for this year. I personally would like to say 25% for this year and then it steps up to 50 the next year.
Right, and, or something.
Right, so I want to make sure we're communicating now, you know, so, so organization's compliant, but that's, but I'm comfortable, we just want to go 25 and then we'll revisit next year.
I think this year is a good year to gauge the response as people are actually facing it this time of year.
I'm okay with the 25, I'd want to bring that, the religious organization down to maybe 50 or at least the same ratio. Just to keep it even and rest of it's okay. Wouldn't we ever consider asking them what their profit loss is just to make sure that there isn't anybody that is ultimately really raking it in as a result of lower fees?
I don't see why not.
I think I'm, I mean, I don't know if you're for the purposes of this exercise, but it would be nice to know.
The only question I have on that one, I don't have the prior policy. My suspicion is they were being charged. My suspicion is they were being charged in the past. So I'd be careful that we're not lowering. In fact, if I recall, it was sixty percent in this category in the past.
So if you're like, maybe we should not take any action, we need to have staff go back and just take a look?
You can take action on the twenty-five percent. Look at the religious environment.
When this goes into effect July one?
Yeah.
Or it wouldn't be any worse by the way to hold out until the June meeting and do them both?
Except in the case of the one organization that needs to
I just don't want us to keep reposting the same policy and changes. So if you guys are comfortable going ahead with the twenty-five, fifty to twenty-five right now, knowing that we're going to come back potentially early June and have another adjustment, I'm all right with that.
Or not.
Huh? Or not?
Yeah.
You want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that category two, where it currently says fifty percent, we change to twenty-five percent. Again, this is where groups in this category are collecting fees, fundraising, that sort of thing. This is not, because that question came up, this is not practices. We're not setting charges for practices.
Can we have a friendly amendment to include that this is who we are committing to the NAP, or that?
Well, this is going into effect July first, so it would be changing it as effective then, with the possibility of whatever we determine at the end of the year, changing the fee to one.
All right, we have a motion.
Sorry.
This question? Here, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side, that motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item seven point six. I don't know if you want to, you want to take this one?
Well
Yeah, sorry, seven point six, this is just a, this
You can stay up there.
Go ahead, stay up there. Jeff, do you want to come up and just give us a quick recap on the Ties, um, dissolution? Just so we know what we are ultimately approving?
Yeah, we're just, we're asking the board to approve a, a resolution authorizing superintendent or designate to, to execute the legal documents as it relates to the Ties dissolution, the potential sale of the Ties building and transfer to NJPE, National Joint Powers Alliance. So, and if you look on the, on the back page where it says, you know, now, now therefore a resolved, what's followed, those are the items that we talked about, I think, when we gave you an update at the last board meeting. It's the twenty dollars to cover potential liabilities, three, uh, three dollars per student to cover its proportion share of cost to maintain, operate Ties building, and the fact that we will, when, if and when they sell the building, will be distributed in our proportion and share in our proceeds.
And we are one of forty-eight member districts, so
That's right.
Other districts, all forty-seven have to do the same thing.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, let me read the motion here. Resolution authorizing execution of legal documents relating to the Ties dissolution. That's it. Moved. Second amendment, any further discussion?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Farman?
Yes.
Hall.
Yep.
Ken?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And Swanson?
Yes. That motion passes?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Now, Keith, come on up. Number eight, new business discussion items, which we have done. So you're going on to number nine, that follow on that's new business action items, negotiations update.
So before you tonight, we have unaffiliated contracts, which is another way of saying groups who aren't represented by a bargaining unit. So those are supervisors, managers, and professional, other professional staff. This settlement of this contract is very similar to the teachers' settlement that you've talked about previously, and mirrors that, that settlement. Just walking through some of the items, embedded in those contracts already is this, at the end of each year, there's a performance evaluation that dictates how much of an increase the person might get, which is very similar to the step process, although it's not automatically built in, it has to be triggered by an evaluation. So there isn't really a salary schedule to speak of, so I think on the major, because I gave you a zero on zero. We've also made some, are going to make some adjustments if approved, to vacation, sort of doing an equity, making all those in that group similar in terms of the amount of vacation. Health and dental insurance, we also have a lower tiered group in that that has a lower contribution than the next tier up, so we're proposing to bring that group up in year two of this settlement. And then four oh three B match, we had a beginning match of one percent for initial employment, and we're proposing to move that to two point five percent, more of a recruitment type of incentive to try to recruit more people to, to our positions. So the total settlement is right around, may come in slightly lower, but four point two, three percent MSBA reporting overall.
So many questions that you might have. What is the year one, is this eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, or is
Yeah, so this group is on the same track as the teachers', so it's actually this year, so, and next year.
So it's, year one is the current year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there will be some retroactive
Yeah. Current, there'll be some retroactive payments.
So you say within budget, and this is, we reflected this in our
Yeah.
Questions?
Straightforward.
Thank you, Keith, for all your work on this. And we need to approve this agreement. I'll make that motion. All right. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side, this, this
Thanks, Keith. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, number ten, this other, we do not have a number ten. Number eleven is community reports. Score on the horn, Matt?
Just as we talked about earlier, we are currently in the middle of, of our superintendent evaluation, as inclusive of all employees of the district. Looking forward to continue to see activity and some great feedback. So if you're back in, we're going to have a future date, I think in June, we will have a closed session to deliver the feedback to Gary, and then come on to the closed session with a public statement of, of the review.
Thank you. Andrew?
Good to be here today, and we talked a little bit about some transportation changes that would be coming down the pipes. And we also did a legend slide update, so we'll see what happens there. And then we talked about the enrollment, and you guys got information on that. Can I say other stuff?
Sure. Go ahead.
So I wanted to let you all know that we have eleven students who are part of the, attend classes through Southwest Metro, and they have a scholarship ranging between a thousand to two thousand dollars from the Southwest Metro Foundation. The ceremony's at seven thirty morning of the twenty-fourth, so I'm going to try and make it, it's a little early, but eleven students, that's the most out of all the eleven member districts, so good for them. Also, I attended the engineering and design thing up in Head and Tech. It was kind of like a family reunion with all the special kids and moms, and it was a lot of fun, and the Shakki kids are brilliant, created a lot of great stuff, and their presentation skills are very good, so they should all be very proud of their work, so that was fun. And I attended the, the staff appreciation thing on Friday while it was really hot in there. It was so fun to get together with all the staff and see them again, so those are always a funny fact. So there. Happy busy.
Good. Tony, do you?
We got nothing.
Here?
Um, yeah, it's just a busy time of year, trying to make it to as many events, graduation, scholarship, give outs, and as possible. I do want to apologize to the public ahead of time, I will not be able to attend the graduation ceremony because that's a chemo week for me, so I'll be taping a message that I penned for the seniors, and I'm excited to, to share that with them, but my analogist thought it was a bad idea to shake six hundred and thirty-some hands. But I can say that I did write individual notes to each of the graduating seniors, to our scholarship recipients, to, to CADA grads, to grads of all programs in the district, so every single one of our graduating kids from whatever program it may be is going to get a first lines hand note that I wrote for them, so thought it was the next best thing to be there, I guess. I want to single Matt out for being a regular this year. It's hard enough to make your own council meetings, but to, to come to ours, I just want to personally thank him for that. And he was able to speak very eloquently when we presented to the city about being an academy champion, because he pays attention. And so definitely thank you for, for paying attention.
Rich?
I'm still shocked. So I was able to attend, I was getting the additions right, PLTW. Yeah, lead the way. The recognition sermon of Gary the other day at the high school. It was the day of the saber showcase, which I'm disappointed I did not make. It's the first one I've missed in ages when I had a competing requirement. PLTW really was, and I was specifically glad I did because I was at the kickoff of the innovative engineering program, I forget the exact name, so moved by that, but then I was on vacation when they had the, the final project, so, but I got to see some of them as the kids presented. And it's just, that program is phenomenal, PLTW, let alone all the other things we do. And it was really great to see the kids be recognized. The CEO of PLTW was there to make a presentation, he commended us for the way and the things we do in the district. It's a great program, and it's a great program for the district, and TJ and all the folks who do that are just doing wonderful things for our kids in particular. In fact, one other thing I'll say, I was really moved by the two students who came back. One is a junior at Madison, and one is a junior at St. Thomas, as I recall, in engineering programs. They talked about how PLTW was foundational for them, and the one is a mentor, the young lady was a mentor for freshmen at St. Thomas. She said, what they're taking, their intro to engineering is exactly what I had in ninth grade here at Shakki. So it just shows you what a great program that is, and we're getting some recognition for it, and it's just, it's really impressive that these kids are doing things that, you know, I couldn't even dream of when I was in school. So that was a great program.
Another great thing about that presentation, and it showed the progression from elementary school engineering, things that we're doing, to now it'll be middle school and into high school, and, and then a couple of our own college students doing that, was really cool.
Yeah, it was fantastic. And the other thing it would say is, we typically would have had a policy meeting to update, but we're just still in the process of breaking the six hundreds forward, so stay tuned on that. Probably have something next, next time.
Sarah, you ready?
I'm good, thanks.
Crystal?
Very good.
Councilwoman?
Couple things, Mr. Chair. First would be the segregation of duties flagged by ODD. I would just like to say, whoever might be listening, that this is something the city of Shakki has been mentioned for fifteen years. It's really common, it's not a big deal. In our case, it's the same situation as the school district, it would cost us tremendously more to fix that than it's actually worth. It doesn't work against you in any way in the audit, so I just wanted to put that out there in public, that if you're not allowing that, it's kind of a catch 22. I'd like to see if I could get a copy of what you discussed tonight about the goals on June seventeenth and the status of how the stuff was addressed, and they could make a great report to council and the public. And same with the fees that were adopted tonight, that'll give, give the public an opportunity to hear what actually passed, which goes to, or whoever, Farman was talking about, he's both need to know as soon as possible, so that would be appreciated.
You can do that? You can do that?
Yeah.
Bob?
I just wanted to thank Gary and Tony for being a part of our children's, sort of children's race. Gary started it, and then he went to two or three other events activities later that morning.
Busy day.
And Tony, basically, he was one of the last people there to attend style of work, so thank you for that.
It did take you that long to run.
I didn't even say you're the last to finish. So the staff did an incredible job, Jenny and Emily, awesome work for that.
Dave?
I haven't been a regular attendee at industry council meetings, but I did go to this last round, and I, I had heard of them, but did not realize just how much people are committing there, and what a powerful group that is, and that kind of feedback, it was, I don't know if you've sat in on any of those, but even one, it's just very, very good, and good for me actually to go to those as well, and it provided really good context, so
Which, which one, which academy did you do?
I, I went to all six
Oh, you're saying circuit, okay.
Wow.
There's one free, so
Yeah, and it's, it's really well done, and so thanks to that group, and those groups, I guess, who, from the community that put that time in as well. It was good.
I should compliment Dave, too. Dave's our go-to person, and I'll put that out publicly on weeks that I have chemo, so whenever there are questions from the community, he's the, he's the point person, but he's not afraid to reach out to me too during that.
And it would be a good week not to have questions.
Save the
Your phone's going to ring Wednesday.
All right. Here, Keith?
Just thanks to everybody in relationship to our celebration event on Thursday. I think it's a credit to our resilience, because there were a lot of things to overcome in that, and, and our graciousness, because I don't think I saw anybody with an unhappy face, even though it was, you know, there was, it was, it was very hot, we had, we had a fire alarm go off, and we had a table crash.
We know that one teacher got a lot of
Yeah, it was one thing after another, but I will say this
We just had to laugh.
Yeah. I must have received six emails from people after that, just saying, don't worry about any of the stuff that happened, we were just, we'd not, we're glad to be there, and glad that the district acknowledged our work.
But that's a credit to the positivity of people, people have positive outlook, even in difficult situations.
Yeah.
So thumbs up to everybody.
All right. Jeff?
You good?
You're good. I'll just say that we have BAC on Wednesday night, that's, things are going swimmingly. Our building, if you have not been up to see lately, it's really, really, really taking shape, both externally and internally. It's very exciting to start seeing these spaces start coming alive too. So we're going to really start seeing things pick up as soon as the, the bell rings for graduation, and they are going to tack the inside and start making some of those connection modifications, so that's, it's, it's just great to see it in this situation that it's in right now, our current state. And also, so many band concerts and choir concerts and drama banquets, and there's, there's a billion banquets going on. I've been to a number of them. Go see them, I mean, go to the high school about any day of the week and just pop into something, you probably find something to, to do with your evening. Lots of important recognition, both for students and, and for staff, so. All righty, let's see here, we're going on to item twelve, recognition of visitors of Gordy. Nobody recognized, so we'll move on to number thirteen, upcoming meetings and important dates. And there's a lovely roster there, right on the back. And one date that's not on here is graduation, which is June third. Yes?
Saturday night.
The second. Oh, going to third, no.